I'm going to call the order this Lacey City Council meeting on December 5th, 2019. If you're able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we get started with this meeting, we have an oath of office to administer to Ed Kunkel. Can you please come to the podium? I state your name.
I, Ed Kunkel.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And that I will faithfully.
And that will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform and discharge.
Perform and discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of councilmember position number three.
Councilmember position number three.
City of Lacey.
City of Lacey.
According to law.
According to law.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
So, before we get to the agenda, I do have two amendments to today's agenda. Under public recognitions, I'd like to add a public recognition to a firm councilmember Linda Zeman. And under the mayor's report, we need to affirm councilmember Kunkel's appointments to council committees and intergovernmental boards and commissions, given those two amendments.
Move to approve the agenda and consent agenda as amended.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded.
Can I offer one more change? The heading on the top of the agenda says work session, and we are in fact a formal session where we'll make decisions tonight, so probably for the record, we should make that change.
Yeah, I think there's a little difference between some of our agendas and what's been published, so we're just confirming that this is a regular full city council meeting. I don't know if we need a formal motion, you know, recognition for that, but thank you for that clarification. So, it's been moved and seconded to adopt the amended agenda. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, and we have an amended agenda. And first up on our amended agenda is public recognitions and presentations, and I have a quick. Linda, can you please come up here? So, Linda Zeman was appointed to this council and has been serving the City of Lacey very admirably since your appointment, and we just want to recognize you for all the hard work that you put in. It's a lot of work being a council member. There's so much time and energy I have to put into it with all the meetings, all the functions, and we just want to really thank you and present you with this award to you and appreciation for all of your outstanding contributions to the City of Lacey in 2019. Thank you so much for what you've done for the City of Lacey, and we wish you the best.
They gave me a microphone. Thank you all so very much. I enjoyed serving the City of Lacey and the residents of Lacey. All of your comments, all of your insight have been extremely valuable. Working with this amazing staff and fellow councilmembers has been absolutely wonderful, so thank you all very much for the opportunity, and I look forward to continuing serving the people of Lacey in other ways. Thank you.
Thank you. So, next up on our agenda is a public comment on any items not on the agenda. No one signed up. Does anyone wish to address this council on any items not on the agenda? Seeing none, then we'll go first to our proclamation, and it's a proclamation in appreciation and support of Master Sergeant, retired Johnson.
City of Lacey official proclamation, whereas the greatest acknowledgement of our freedom is to honor our armed forces veterans who have sacrificed and in many instances paid the ultimate price for our freedom, and?
Whereas the City of Lacey is dedicated to ensuring the support and equality of life of the nearly 6,000 veterans who reside in Lacey and have bravely and selflessly served our country, both at home and abroad, and?
Whereas Master Sergeant, retired Leslie Les Johnson enlisted in the Army at the age of 18 at Camp Shelby, Mississippi, as a combat medic, and?
Whereas Master Sergeant, retired Johnson, served in World War II and fought in the Battle of Normandy. His service also extended into the Korean War, and?
Whereas Master Sergeant, retired Johnson, received the Purple Heart, the Bronze Star with Valor for his meritorious service. He also received Presidential and Congressional Medals, citations, and commendations, and?
Whereas Master Sergeant, retired Johnson, served 24 years in the military before retiring in July 1967 to the City of Lacey, and whereas Master Sergeant, retired Johnson continues to be an, excuse me, inspiration to all of us through his demonstration of courage, leadership, and commitment in our service to our community and country.
Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the City of Lacey is proud to call Master Sergeant, retired Johnson, a resident of Lacey, and give special honor and recognition to him for his years and dedicated and selfless military service. Signed, myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, December 5th, 2019. And I know councilmember Stedman has a few more words.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to give a little bio on Master Sergeant Les Johnson, he was born in September 1924 in the Houkla, Mississippi, to Jim and Eunice Johnson. Les was the oldest of eight children in the cotton farming family. At the age of 18, he enlisted in the Army May 1943, Little Rock, Arkansas, as a combat medic. His assignments include Camp Forest, Tennessee, Camp Phillips, Kansas, Fort Dix, New Jersey, Camp Kilmer, New Jersey, England on the Queen Mary, Omaha Beach in Normandy, France wounded in combat, England recovery, Germany eight years, Fort Ruckert, Alabama, Korea first tour, Camp Sendai, Japan, Fort Douglas, Utah, received GED, Korea second tour, Fort Devens, Massachusetts, Camp Walters, Texas, Hawaii on the Big Island, Fort Ord, California. His medals and commendations include the Purple Heart, Bronze Star with Valor, World War II victory, Army Accommodation Medal, Good Conduct Medal, National Defense Medal, American Campaign, Europe-African Campaign, Presidential Unit Citation, Army of Occupation, Greek War Cross, Special Congressional Medal of Battle of Normandy, Korea Service Medal, United Nations Korean Service Medal, Korean War Ambassador for Peace Medal, Korean Presidential Unit Citations. This gives you a little background of the service, a lifetime of service that Leslie has given to this nation, and it's free because of these sacrifices and men and women just like him. So, tonight was an honor to celebrate you, Leslie.
So, Leslie, you can?
Thank you. And I just want to thank you for your call, your service, and for being a wonderful Lacey resident. Thank you for everything, and thank you for being here tonight.
On behalf of the Johnson family, I want to thank the City of Lacey for recognizing Mr. Johnson, longtime friend of mine. His family's here today, his daughters Linda and Karen Johnson are here, his granddaughter Katie and boyfriend TJ. But we just really appreciate the fact that you guys take the time out to do this, and, you know, we look for maybe something other in the future we've talked about, but that's fine.
Yes. Thank you so much, and thank you for what you've done.
You could stay around and listen, but.
Thank you again. Thank you so much, and thank you for coming, and let us recognize you tonight. Thank you. So, next up on our agenda, under ordinances, there's quite a few, and I know Troy Wu, our finance director, is actually home ill today, so it looks like the city manager is going to cover the majority of these, and we'll start off with ordinance 1558 relating to the 2020 budget adoption. City manager.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, thank you. As you stated, Troy is ill, so we are, or I am pinch hitting for him. This is really the final stage of the budget process. As city council knows, we had a full presentation on October 24th. We had a revenue hearing on November 7th, as well as the first public hearing on the budget where the city council took testimony, and then we had our final public hearing on the budget on the 14th of November. We have incorporated a couple changes on the advice of council. Those include $50,000 for the Economic Development Initiative, known as the Woodland District Plan, Strategic Plan, which is the Lacey Midtown Amenities, $75,000 for the Public Affairs Department Proposed Audit and Communication Plan. Also, there's money set aside for Memorial for the Compassion Campaign of 100,000 Acts, which is 25,000. There's also an adjustment to property taxes based on the annual refund levy, as well as new construction, which totals just under 13,500. And then there's also an additional $10,000 for the Neighborhood Community Program. So, with that, the total budget for 2020 will be 156,410,821. The general fund will be 51,555,869. With that, I would entertain any questions, but we're recommending approval of the ordinance.
Can I get a motion?
I move that we adopt the 2020 budget ordinance setting the total budget in the amount of 156,410,821, and the general fund total budget in the amount of 51,555,869.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Councilmember?
Just of note, I'm pleased to see that our budget can be a little bit less than previous budget. That just shows discipline and accuracy in recording the budget. I do regret that some of the disadvantages of budget are that there will be an increase in property tax collections. I'm not in favor of those in general, but the council has deliberated that, and therefore I will be proudly voting yes for this budget.
Thank you. Any other discussion? It's been moved and seconded to adopt the 2020 budget ordinance. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next up is ordinance 1859 relating to the reserve designation.
Thank you, council. So, before you is an ordinance for the GASB 54, or Governmental Accounting Standards Board, GASB 54. So, every two years we go before council and discuss our undesignated reserves. As you know, we spoke about this at somewhat in length at a work session, but we typically have a couple categories of reserves. One are restricted. Those are those reserves that if we get a donation from a private party that basically specifically said this is the intent of those dollars. Those are the restricted category. Council has the ability to make committed decisions on funds. Those are done at the highest level, the legislative body of council. Once those funds are committed, they cannot be changed until there is a further council action. There's also a category called assigned. That is where council has given the authority to the city manager and the finance director to make assigned funds in the interim when we're making decisions if they should be committed. And then there's also the remaining funds that are considered unassigned. There is the attachment to the staff report that designates the number of funds that are being committed by council. I'll just highlight a couple of those. We have about $5.5 million set aside for a future police station. We have $2.5 million for a strategic investment fund to meet our economic development priorities, and we also have about $1.5 million in one fund for field replacement for the rack. I would be happy to entertain any other questions on any other of those line items, but this is, we're recommending action by the council to commit these funds for the next two years.
Can I get a motion?
I would move to adopt ordinance 1559.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt our proposed ordinance for reserve designations, ordinance 1559. Is there any discussion? Councilmember?
I just want to acknowledge that we, as a city, one of the reasons for our perfect bond rating is our large store of reserves. For the public to know, too, though, from some of my time on the Finance Committee and some of my time on the other committees, that the designation of types of reserves, I think, is extremely excellent practice because it prepares these reserves so they're not, they're well, they're spent with a lot of discipline. And I think that that next level, or those levels of dedication are really a very amazing tool that the city employs to be disciplined in budgeting.
Thank you. Any other discussion? It's been moved and seconded to adopt our reserve designation ordinance, ordinance 1559. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Now on to ordinance 1560 relating to BNO tax.
So, honorable mayor and city council, in 2019, the state legislature passed two bills that required changes to the BNO tax, or Business and Occupation Taxes. Since 2004, all cities are required to adopt a model business or BNO tax to ensure there's continuity and predictability to the business community as they conduct business from different jurisdictions throughout the state. So, some of the highlighted changes that they proposed for this year, one include a service apportionment. They're providing a model ordinance with changes that will provide a better apportionment test. One example I give you, if you're doing business in two different cities, this is a more clear-cut way or defined way to see which city actually received those dollars in BNO when they conduct business. The annual taxpayer filing deadline has also been changed to April 15th. It used to be January 31st. There's also a change in the definition engaging in business. There's been some other technical changes. We had this discussion before the Finance Committee meeting earlier this, actually last month, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Move to adopt, what is it, ordinance 1560, adopting the provisions of the Business and Occupation Tax Model Ordinance.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Councilmember?
I just want to acknowledge that historically, Lacey has been a little bit wary of BNO tax, recognizing that it is part of our structure, but also that it's mandated by state law as far as the, not just the opportunities for it, but the mandates for it, as is this ordinance, too, that's being brought down from the state legislature, which we honor. And I did want to note for the public record, too, though, that Lacey does have a competitive BNO structure for new businesses in place that, as a way to encourage new businesses from coming to Lacey and not letting BNO tax interrupt their startup.
You know, it's interesting. One part of this ordinance is moving the annual filing date from January 31st to April 15th, and I was wondering why the state legislature made that change. Well, I think this council may know, I'm currently now on the Board of Directors for the Washington Retail Association, and that is feedback from some of our largest retailers, who the fourth quarter is their busiest quarter of the year, and they're still sort of collecting receipts and everything until mid-January, and so to come up with that fourth quarter's final receipts and everything by January 31st was a burden for a lot of our retailers, and so the state legislature listened to that group and moved, extended, and moved it back to the April 15th deadline. And so, that was our state legislature actually listening to our business community and making an adjustment there. And I didn't know that until I found out, actually, over the last couple days of why that was changed. So, I thought that was kind of neat that, you know, the state legislature listened to the business community on that one.
Well, I'm not a businessperson, but I am on the Association of Washington City's Board, and I was really pleased how they coordinated with a number of groups to have a work task force group to come up with this, and so it had a lot of input from a number of groups that are impacted by this. And so, I just wanted to make sure that the AWC is recognized for putting the task force together.
Councilmember?
I just want to add, as much as I dislike the BNO tax, this at least is an example of actually making it simpler and more even across the state, just to make it easier on businesses to actually handle the paperwork for this. So, for that reason, I'll support this.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded to amend Lacey Municipal Code Title 3.02, the Business and Occupation Taxes, and to adopt this ordinance, adopting provisions of the Business Occupation Tax Model Ordinance. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And now on to ordinance 1561 relating to affordable and supportive housing.
Troy's going to give this presentation. All right, I'll do it. So, council may recall that you passed a resolution to the intent to author access authorization to this diversion of sales tax. Want to be very clear, the state legislature authorized cities and state of Washington to take a portion of the state sales tax. It's not a news tax, and actually dedicate that to affordable housing proposals or projects. So, the collection of this tax is actually 0.0073%. What that means for the City of Lacey, it would be about $91,488 annually for the next 20 years. Now, that would be the projected cap. It's not going to go any higher than that. It potentially could go lower than that if the economy takes a downturn. So, we have, this is the final process, and to access those funds, we need to have an affirmative ordinance by the city council. Once that is passed, we will alert the state, and then we will be able to access those dollars, a portion to the city. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Can I get a motion?
I move that we adopt ordinance 1561, authorizing the City of Lacey to collect sales and use tax credit for affordable and supportive housing in accordance with SHB 1406.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion?
I just want to make sure that it's clear that this is not a new tax. This is simply taking taxes that are already being collected by the state and moving them from the state to the local jurisdiction to be able to use that money locally to help in the affordable housing crisis.
Any other discussion? Councilmember?
I may need a little help from the city manager here, but through the work that we've been doing with the Regional Housing Council, there's been conversation about the cities and the county pooling their collective sales tax resources so that we can have, move the needle a little further, you know, put our money together on one big project. Is there anything you'd like to add to that?
Yeah, that is correct. My understanding is that Thurston County, as well as City of Olympia and Tumwaterville acted on their respective resolution and ordinances, so there has been discussion collectively. We can actually do more if we leverage our dollars together, although $91,000 is a lot of money. Over the long run, we're talking about affordable housing does not get you far enough. Collectively, we're closer to $1 million if we combine those resources. So, at some point, there'll be more discussion regionally, and then there could be a priorities and goal set for, as a region, of what we could do with those funds.
Then could we schedule a work session at some point and come back with a proposed resolution to do that?
Yeah, and I think that would probably be in the terms of an interlocal agreement, and so we would work with our partners to figure out an interlocal agreement and then figure out the priorities through that. But yes, that would be a next step.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember?
We've seen a trend in the recent years of the state legislature and their wisdom diverting collected taxes back to the local communities, and I just think it's extremely empowering for us to be able to do that. Therefore, I'll be voting for this absolutely. And I think that the level that it's at is not extreme, so it's that we can, we're kind of being forced to, as we should, be extremely disciplined in how we utilize those funds and maybe grow them from those funds, and just some really creative things to really address the issues.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance 1561, authorizing the City of Lacey to collect sales and use tax credits for affordable and supportive housing in accordance with Senate House Bill, or SHB 1406. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries as well. Now, we're on to ordinance 1562, extending the cable and franchise with Comcast Cable Communications. This is Steve Kirchman.
You took the words right out of my mouth. Thank you, Mayor and council, and this evening we are proposing an ordinance that will provide limited-term extension of Lacey's cable television Comcast franchise with Comcast Cable Communications. I'm coming down with a little bit of a cold or something here. In 2009, the city approved ordinance 1325, which granted a 10-year non-exclusive cable franchise agreement to Comcast to provide cable franchise services, or services within our community. The effective term of that concluded in May of this year, and you'll recall, back in April or May, I came to you and we passed an extension through the 31st of December, which is, what, about three weeks away or so. We aren't quite done with the franchising process, so we're here to ask you to do, actually extend it for a few more months. We, as you know, we jointly negotiate with Olympia and Tumwater and Thurston County at the table, and so there's just a lot of issues and a lot of players, a lot of moving parts, and we're just not quite at the point where we're ready to bring it to you and say it's ready for signature and review. The proposal would actually extend the franchise through June of 2020, so basically six months. The utilities community, or committee at their December 2nd meeting reviewed the proposal, and they have recommended the full council adopt it, and so I'll think I'll pause here and respond to questions or comments.
Can I get a motion?
Move to approve ordinance 1562, providing limited-term extension of the City of Lacey cable television franchise with Comcast Cable Communication Management, LLC.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Councilmember?
One of the points that was brought up by the city manager at the utilities committee that did forward this to the council was that the merging with the other municipalities is a cost-saving factor, so we can be proud of that versus in the past, we've tended to do this, you know, and negotiate individually by community, so we're glad to hear about that cost-saving opportunity.
Excellent. Anything else? Seeing none, it's been moved and seconded to approve this ordinance 1562, providing a limited-term extension to the City of Lacey cable television franchise with Comcast Cable Communications Management, LLC. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, and we'll extend that till June 30th. And next up on our agenda is the mayor's report, and as a lot of us witnessed earlier, right before the meeting, we have a new councilmember, and I'd like to welcome Councilmember Kunkel to the City of Lacey. We, every councilmember has assignments, council committee assignments, and so we are suggesting that we keep the same council committee assignments that Councilmember Zeman had, which was the Community Relations and Public Affairs and Utilities Committees, and for the Intergovernmental Board and Commissions, the Economic Development Council. And so, that will, that needs full council approval. I would move that we do that. Can I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? I guess I should turn it over to Councilmember Kunkel, because are these all committee assignments that you would be willing to take on for a little bit here?
I will. Thank you.
Great.
And that would be, just for clarification, so that's?
Till January?
Till January, or whenever we do, or the next?
Yes, and so, so that'll be for the end of this month, and then? Yes, and so so that'll be for the end of this month and then it'll actually be to the end of January. We'll have new council assignments in February where the council in January will go through a process of selecting what committee assignments they'd like to be on and there'll be some discussion and then council will approve it for the following year.
And that that change up is traditional, not necessarily ordinal, is that correct?
Yeah, traditionally, that's what we do, yes.
Did I make up that word?
Ordinal.
Ordinal?
You might have made that word.
Yeah.
I think ordinal is.
But traditional.
Can you say February even one more time?
Good morning to Councilmember Kunkel. There will be more assignments.
Councilmember Cox would like to reassure you that there will be more assignments. How many do you have now? Seven?
Oh, yeah.
Something like that.
There will be a rearranging, that's for sure. So it's been moved and seconded to confirm that Councilmember Kunkel will be appointed to the Community Relations and Public Affairs and Utilities Committees and to the Economic Development Council. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And I also like to just take this time to welcome Malcolm Miller who was also elected to the city of Lacey and so we're really looking forward to working with you this next year and can't wait to, you know, get to know you a little bit better and get to get to work making Lacey the best place it can possibly be. So welcome and it's great to see you here tonight. So now we're on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Honorable Mayor and City Council, we have a number of items before you. The first one is going to be from Director Scott Agar. This is a contract award for Rue Mac Street wastewater improvements. Scott?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. So staff recommends approval of contract for Rue Mac Street wastewater improvements. That's contract number PW 2019-25 to watch construction and trucking in the amount of There were 14 bidders on a project, which makes it a very competitive project. There are 80 working days allowed for the project and work is scheduled to begin in February. So there's about 400 or 4,500 feet of 6-inch diameter sewer main that will go in as part of this project. That plus there'll be connections and removal of a of a bioxide station and other miscellaneous work. The main purpose of this is to address odor control down in in this location near which this line runs from about Stockton and 59th Loop through Annesman down to Rue Mac and then it'll run north on Rue Mac all the way to Mullen. But there's a bioxide station there. There's some odor control issues so the main purpose of this project is to eliminate those odor control issues. I also need to note that there will be a budget amendment required for this project. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them for you.
Can I get a motion?
I'd move to award lease contract number PW 2019-25 to low bidder watch construction and trucking from Tom Water, Washington in the amount of $693,023.65.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Councilmember?
I just wanted to point out the fact that in busy times, you usually usually don't get 13 bidders when they're busy and workforce is, you know, hard to find and maintain but it does pound home the fact that engineering amount was 608,000 and the lowest bid was 300 693. The highest bid was 1.8 million. So I'm going to touch on this in my in my committee report later when it comes to going out for bid in the best economic times in that any of us have ever seen, that the prices are going to be higher. The materials are higher, the, you know, people are getting paid more. It just it's a compounding effect when the economy is good, so.
Counselor.
Yeah, just a quick question. Can you talk a little bit about the budget amendment?
Yes, so for for this coming year, the budget amount was 570,000 and obviously the bid is 693. You know, we have plenty in reserves to cover this so that's not a concern. Part of this gets to our our budget process as it is. You know, we're we're putting budget numbers together early in the year, you know, and so then it's almost, I mean, it's several months. Quite often, it's before we've even began design on a project that those budget numbers are created. So it's just it's a part of the process that we're trying, you know, continually working on but that's a little bit of the nature of the, you know, the cause of the difference in our in our budget request.
Thank you.
And what the contract is.
Counselor.
So the the council member Stedman spoke to the difference between the engineer's estimate and the low bid. Apparently though, having so many bids this time whereas in years past, sometimes we've had to deal with having one bid, apparently that range of $400,000, you know, saved just $400,000 theoretically. Would you like to speak to why so many people bid this time? Are they needing work or are there just more companies out there? What's the deal?
Well, this is the best time of year to bid. I mean, during the winter is a slow time for construction so you're typically going to get more bidders. Obviously, we weren't expecting the numbers to come in as high. I've said reported before that, you know, the methodology that's used by agencies for estimating projects is different than what contractors do. You know, contractors are using labor, material, equipment, supplies, their own production rates, you know, whatever profit margins they deem, you know, market values. We take in historical rates so, you know, these are it's a it's a competitive process with numerous unit prices. We have a lot of history on those. We use those historical values. We program in, you know, for inflation and time of year, the competitiveness. If the market's driven asphalt up and other project costs, we also take that into account. But with that said, you know, there are different methodologies and, you know, in this case, the the numbers have come out higher and.
If I may, I would guess that maybe. I would guess that maybe since it's the off-year, off-time of year and they're looking for the work, that they had to bid in the seasonal cost of subbing out part of their work. Could that be true?
Potentially.
Is there any other discussion?
Just one quick point. Couldn't possibly be that we have a reputation of being really great to work with, could it Scott?
I think that's it.
So I guess has this been an issue for a while, this odor in this area? How'd this come to us from this, you know, this issue?
Well, so, you know, our our policy is, you know, zero tolerance when it comes to odors. We want no odors and, you know, just this is a step line. It's not a gravity line and step lines do produce more odor than a conventional gravity line. So we treat that with bioxide, which neutralizes that. But sometimes you have a situation in terms of the length of the line, dead zones and other things that you just can't, you know, eliminate that. So the nature of this, by extending the line, creating another extension, creating a larger diameter line, all those factors will go into elimination of the odor. They're all helpful.
Great.
But so basically how we came about it, yeah, just report from the citizens.
Thank you. I appreciate that explanation. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved and seconded to award this Lacey contract PW 219-25 to the low bidder. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.
The next item is a Shoreline Master Program Grant Authorization and Rick Walk will provide that information.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Again, before you, is a request to approve a motion to authorize the mayor to sign a grant agreement with Department of Ecology. The purpose of the the grant agreement is to receive about $28,000 in in grant funds to update our Shoreline Master Program. Our Shoreline Master Program went through a substantial update back in 2011 and and it's a real robust document. However, the state requires an eight-year cycle of updating those master programs going forward and this is that process. We don't expect a the same type of update that we did before because that was that 2011 update was to a master program that was adopted in the in the 70s and so this time we're going to be going back in and really looking at basically a gap analysis. We're going to reviewing our existing document with any legislative amendments that have occurred over the last eight years, making sure it's consistent with our critical area regulations, reviewing shoreline permits issued since 2010 to see if there are any issues or elements that need to be addressed and then also consistent with our competency plan. And one other aspect of it is that again, that existing Shoreline Master Program is quite thick and and has a lot of good information in it but it's not very easy to find that information. So part of this effort is to hire that consultant to help reformat so we can maybe get the more relevant and easy to use or more frequently used information in a consolidated spot so it's both easier for staff as well as property owners and applicants to find the information they need to do a project. So with that, again, this grant program would be approximately a year. We would start it's on the currently on the Long Range Planning Program and we would initiate the the process this coming January. With this update, we'll also be doing a public participation proponent and we're also having conversations with the Planning Commission about how to design that public participation and who to make sure we invite directly into the table in addition to all the property owners within the shoreline jurisdictions of the city of Lacey. With that, I'd be happy to respond to any questions that the council may have.
Move to authorize the mayor to sign a grant agreement with the Washington State Department of Ecology to provide financial assistance for the periodic update of city's Shoreline Master Program.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I have just a one quick, just a question about it. When when you this agreement page where the first page, it says the effective date of this agreement is July 1st, 2019. What is the can you tell me the rationale of why it's in July?
That's the standardized documents that the Department of Ecology provided us but the conclusion date is June 30th of 2021 so we're still in that window. In addition, we'll be entering into a professional service agreement with a consultant team after this grant document is signed and that will have a 12-month time period so we will be within the framework of the the grant contract.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor.
Yeah, I just want to say that I had the pleasure of being the chair of the Planning Commission last time we worked on this and worked with Rick on this. So good luck to the Planning Commission. That was a tremendous amount of work. Took us a full, at least a full year and had lots of participation from the public and different interested parties but I think what the the product that we came out with was actually quite good and I think after that it was copied by quite a few other jurisdictions. So good luck in updating that.
Well, thank you. And one of the things was it was daunting to always go into Shoreline reviews and and working through that public process but we did have a good document to start from and there hasn't been a lot of activity since that time and so we don't need to go back and do wholesale changes. That's one benefit and that's why we'd be able to leverage that $28,000 as best as possible.
Excellent. Any other discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved and seconded to authorize the mayor to sign this grant agreement with the Washington State Department of Ecology to provide financial assistance for the periodic update of the city's Shoreline Master Program. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Just one follow-up on Debbie, Mayor, I think that has to do with the legislative calendar year when that money was authorized. So July 2019.
Okay.
I believe so. A good guess, right?
That's correct.
It works.
We'll go with it.
Okay. The other item is Woodbrook Townhomes Land Use Appeal and Rick Walk will provide that information.
Yes, and this is primarily just a briefing for the council tonight. The Woodbrook Townhome Project received site plan review and environmental determination back in August of August 27th of this year. The Shilter Farm Homer Association appealed that decision to the city of Lacey Hearing Examiner and the city of Lacey Hearing Examiner denied that appeal request. Since that time, the Shilter Farm Homer Association has filed an appeal of the Hearing Examiner's decision to the city council. The main purpose of this update tonight is to let the council know that normally an appeal filed is to be heard by the city council within 30 days of that filing. However, both parties, the the developer of the Woodbrook Townhome Project as well as Shilter Farm HOA have both jointly filed a stipulation to extend that 30-day period to 90 days so that they have some time to negotiate a settlement. And so with that stipulation, this matter will be scheduled before the city council at your February 5th public meeting date and if settlement is not reached, then this will move forward to the city council and we would provide prior to that hearing, the council the full record so that you may review that record and make a decision on the appeal. Do you want to remind the council, this is a closed-record appeal process and so this is not a topic you can speak about outside of the public meeting format and to maintain the integrity of the appearance of fairness doctrine. So if you have any questions, I will respond to it but I can't not to any project specifics.
Counselor.
To be to be clear, if the parties should reach their own settlement prior to the February, then this council will not hear it. Is that correct?
Correct.
Counselor.
They would they would if the parties reach settlement, then they will request withdrawal of the agreement. If there are any provisions there that affect city of Lacey standards, we would have to weigh in as a city of Lacey as well, staff-wise.
The staff would as per as per ordinance but there would no be no decision at the council level at that point if they were to agree prior.
Correct.
Without being project-specific, it's a standardized fee for appeals for the Hearing Examiner and right so.
Yes, there is an appeal fee to take it to the Hearing Examiner and there is also an appeal fee to appeal the Hearing Examiner's decision to council.
Do you recall those off the top of your head? This is for anybody that files an appeal.
Correct and the the I believe the appeal to city council of the Hearing Examiner's decision is, I want to say between $650 somewhere in there. The appeal decision of the SPR decision to to Hearing Examiner is around $2,200.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Aren't those designed to cover the cost of of the staff for those appeals?
It those the appeals are set to address a portion of the cost. As we went through and set the the fees, we we reviewed all of our fees and determined what the actual cost was for processing certain types of applications and then set a fee for fee recovery. In terms of appeal, we recover about 15 to 20% of the the total cost of the appeal.
A constituent asked me yesterday if there was also an hourly fee on the part of the Hearing Examiner on top of the flat fee and I didn't know.
There there is language in our ordinance that refers to plus Hearing Examiner time but that was a scribner's error and it's not applied. It's a.
Thank you.
Counselor.
Just to add one quick thing, this is something that is going to be on our agenda sometime early next year to look at, correct? As far as the the fees in general for appeals. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next agenda item?
Next item is proposed amendment to an interlocal agreement for cable franchise negotiation consulting services and Steve Kirkman will provide that report.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. So this is actually part two of the ordinance that we just approved. As I mentioned, the four jurisdictions utilize a actually one of the best in the country attorney who specializes in franchise negotiations and we've been working with him for about 18 months and we need another four or five months, as I mentioned, to finish the project up. This extension, of course, will be more attorney time with that so we anticipate it'll add about $4,000 to our contracts. So the total expenditure for us over the course of the project, excuse me, will be about $25,000. And I think I'll pause there. We kind of covered it with the franchise agreement itself and just respond to questions or comments.
Can I get a motion?
I would authorize the city manager I'd make a motion to authorize the city manager to sign proposed amendments to the interlocal agreement for cable franchise negotiation consulting services.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Counselor.
Again, on the cost savings, the the extension is is some obviously inevitable but the that we're sharing it with the other municipalities would likely have been three times as much, right?
Right.
Quick question. So we're working with a negotiated thing for Comcast. Does that rule out any other utilities to come in as well?
No, so Comcast at this time and always has been our only cable franchise holder but our franchises, all of our franchises, not just cable are non-exclusive. but our franchises, all of our franchises, not just cable, are non-exclusive. So we would welcome any other cable provider that would be interested in entering the market, absolutely.
Okay, that's great.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved and seconded to authorize the city manager to sign the proposed amendments to the interlocal agreement for cable franchise negotiation consulting services. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
And so Steve has one more. We have an inter-agency agreement amendment with the Washington Department of Enterprise Services for project management services, planning to the Veterans Services Hub renovation project.
So council will recall, last June, we were fortunate to receive $2 million in capital state budget grant funding for the Veterans Hub project. And you'll also recall from a recent update that the Department of Veterans Affairs has allocated $500,000 to do interior improvements to the 2,400 square feet of space that they'll be occupying when the project is done. We are going to propose that we utilize the Department of Enterprise Services, and it's got the big, long name that I'm not seeing right here in front of me, but it has to do with their energy upgrades for energy conservation. A lot of this project is related to energy conservation work. We'll be completely rewrapping the building in a new shell. We'll be replacing all the windows, all the lighting fixtures, all the plumbing fixtures. Anything that uses energy is going to be replaced. There'll be a new roof, there'll be four new HVAC systems installed. And because there's so much of the project being dedicated towards energy, I mean, there are improvements that need to be made anyway, but they have obviously energy benefits. DES has graciously decided that we can wrap the whole project into our standing energy conservation contract that we've had with them for probably six or seven years now for other projects. I think the community center was the most recent. So this proposal will actually amend our standing agreement to allow the work that we are proposing for the hub, and it will also allow about $180,000 in funding to provide those services. And so what we're looking at right now in Phase One is architectural and engineering services, which will bring us through schematic design, it may not completely finish construction documents. And then in the spring, May, April, May, we'll come back and ask for a similar amendment that will allow for construction activities and the allocation of those funds. It all will come out of the $2 million grant, at this point anyway, so we're not concerned about impact on local resources.
I'd move to authorize the city manager to sign the proposed inter-agency agreement amendment with Washington Department of Enterprise Services for project management services pertaining to Lacey Service, Services Hub renovation project, and the inter-agency agreement funding approval form for Washington Department of Enterprise Services to facilitate the proposed energy efficiency audit.
Second.
Premature second here, sorry.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion?
One question is, Steve, this is a lot of work. Are they going to have to vacate the premises at some point during all this?
Actually, actually, yes. We had our first project conference call last Tuesday, and it's going to become a weekly and probably several times a week as we move along here. If you remember the campus, there was a building identical to our building right across the parking lot that maybe a month ago they completed, basically raising it, and there's just, raising meaning tearing it down, and there's just a gravel lot there now in the old building pad. So what we're thinking now is we will work through the connections the college has for access to portable-type classroom buildings and do some sort of a little modular arrangement over there, probably with several of those because we have a big meeting room we have to replace and et cetera. And we'll have boardwalks or pavers or something to connect them that'll all be ADA compliant and, you know, accessible. And we'll be there four, five, six months, we're estimating, and then move back across the parking lot into the new building. It'll be a great project. The building itself, you know, was built in the early 80s, and you can tell, I mean, it's been a great facility for a long time, but it's ready for a little, you know, freshening up and some, some heavy-duty work. So it'll be, to someone that hasn't been there for a while, they're going to drive in and think it's a brand-new building because the exterior and the interior are all going to be basically brand-new.
That's great. Thanks.
Deputy Mayor.
So, I'm just really excited about this because it feeds into our climate mitigation plan of reducing energy use, and I hope it's not ready yet, obviously, because they're going to evaluate it, but you'll be able to come back to one of, like the General Government or Land Use Committee and let us know how much energy we're in cost savings.
Absolutely. So, research says we should expect 35%, 40% based on that type of building, but we'll have really good numbers for you. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Great. It's, so it's been moved and seconded to authorize the city manager to sign this inter-agency agreement. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And now, we're on to standing general committees. First up is the Community Relations and Public Affairs Committee.
Thanks, Mayor. Community Relations, Public Affairs met on November 4th at 11:00 a.m. Myself, Carolyn Cox, and Councilmember Zeeman were present. The one item, agenda, was a Blue Star Memorial Byway Marker Proposal. The Friendly Flower Garden Club submitted a proposal to install a Blue Family Memorial Byway Marker at Lacey Civic Plaza. The marker will honor those who have served and who are currently serving in the military. The club's project for the marker was presented, the cost of the marker is $510, and the club plans to donate the marker to the city and request the city staff to assist arranging and supporting of the, in a dedication ceremony. And that is my report.
Thank you. Utilities Committee.
Mike, would you like to take utilities, especially since there's an item on there that you proposed? Take a moment there?
Yeah, I wasn't prepared to, but, let's see. Want to come back to it?
Go ahead and give the report, Councilmember.
Okay. So Utilities met November 4th, 2019, and the first item of discussion was the utility billing website payment upgrade demonstration. That utility billing is going higher tech, new tech, cutting-edge, and it promises to provide the citizens a better experience when doing electronic payments for the utilities on our website. It includes text technology as well, which is becoming very popular now in many, many kinds of transactions in our culture. Fire hydrant operation and maintenance update was received by the committee. The highlights includes the hydrant and service line repairs, compliance with insurance requirements, hydrant 10-point inspection and routine maintenance and small repairs, and the reduction of water theft through lock installation programs. Next up was an item that was brought up by Councilmember Stedman.
I could speak to that, too.
Speak to that?
Yep. I requested that we bring the discussion of the city's waste hauling to the full council to discuss whether or not if it's beneficial to the city and our ratepayers to look in, possibly given the, looking into an RFP or giving notice to the contract.
Okay. Well, thank you for that, and I'm sure we'll have future conversations about that. Then, last up is our Transportation Committee. Councilmember Hearn.
So Transportation Committee met November 5th. First, we received a construction update, including College and Elm Highway overlay called the Super T Project, the new College and 22nd Roundabout. We also received an update about the Mullin and Carpenter Roundabout as a partnership project with Thurston County. We received an update on the Depot Trail amenity, and we also received an update of the City Hall Police Department parking lot gate, which will include a new card reader access for both pedestrian and auto, and construction is expected to begin in December. Chief, do we have any updates on that? I caught you off-guard. That was not a pun, it may be intended. Snow and ice program was also discussed, improvements to the snow and ice, improvements to the snow and ice response plan for 2019 to include a route expansion and increase in salt storage. We have more storage capacity now for salt, and the staff person was very proudly demonstrating the awesome construction job that was done, and efficiently, of course, to be able to store more, more salt, which gives us a quicker de-icing response. If you need salt in a snowed Maggeden...
We got it.
We got it, because it's hard to pick up the phone and say, hey, can we borrow some salt, because everybody else has the same problem, so...
I'm saving all my salt in my cupboard.
That's right. That's right. So, it's good to get that report before a snow episode.
It's also good when your public works director is from the Spokane area where it snows a lot.
That's right. Director Egger also spoke about his Spokane experience at the time, so we're better than we were. So, also, we acquired a new vehicle for a more balanced response area. It always comes up, I'll bring it up here, the issue of dealing with snow on non-arterial roads, it always comes up as the discussion from the citizenry, and it cannot be overstated that though the city is not able to, for liability reasons, time reasons, capacity reasons, deal with non-arterial roads, homeowners' associations are clearly within their rights and abilities to arrange, pre-arrange, set up any kind of professional snow removal service that could kick in during a snow event. And incidentally, and this wasn't discussed at the committee, there are some licensed and bonded entrepreneurs out there that would love to have that business, too. So, if your, if your non-arterial community or neighborhood wants to handle that, then there are ways to do it. But, don't call the city, we'll be busy taking care of the arterials.
Councilmember Hearn, I just want to make sure the police chief had a chance to answer your question about the gate.
Yes, did you want to, I didn't mean to cut you off before I cut you in. Did you want to speak on to the, to the gate and how that's going? Chief?
Yeah, I can, I can tell you that that's a, a much-needed and welcomed addition to ensure the safety and security of that rear parking lot, not only in the personnel, but also the vehicles and equipment that we have back there. And this project will not only secure that area, but provide easy access, both with our staff on foot as well as the vehicles itself, without limiting any type of response time, as well as how the college's side gate to go out as well. So, I don't know if there's any specific questions as to, you know, what brought about that, the, the, the request for the change, but it's, it's a real welcome addition as we move forward to ensure the safety and security of our campus here at City Hall.
So I'd imagine that was brought about by you, under your direction. You asked for that, is that...
I did. And it was a culmination of several events that we've had over the past few years in the past parking lot that seem to have been accelerated by, you know, the recent influx of quality-of-life issues and people in and around the City Hall campus.
So, how long have you been chief now of Lacey, please?
About 10 months, so we're pushing a year now.
You're not the new guy hardly anymore, so...
Yeah, I'm not the new guy. I think I can look at our HR director for that, so...
Well, an extended welcome again, and you're doing a great job, and I know we really appreciate the perspective and the leadership you brought to our city.
It's a pleasure to be here, thank you.
Thank you. Well, that's the end of our general committees' reports. We're going on to boards, commissions, and community reports. I do not have a report, but I do like to recognize David from our Planning Commission's here. Thank you for being here and all the work you do with the Planning Commission. So next up is the Deputy Mayor.
So, Joint Animal Services Commission, Jazzcom, met November 14th, and we discussed the budget again, and that was mainly the whole gist of the agenda, and whether or not to fund additional staff, which is really needed, both a field officer and a animal care tech. But, obviously, they come with costs. So, after several budget scenarios, the commission decided on funding one animal care tech with a, and using a reserve subsidy of $185,000. The subsidy was already designated at $150,000, just to help cover costs. So this was an addition of $35,000 more, and Jazzcom is looking at ways to wean off of subsidizing the budget in the near future, and we've, the commission made a special effort to talk about this. So what this budget means to Lacey will be assessed at $289,176. And this amount has already been, or around this amount, has already been included in the city budget, and the Jazzcom budget will be up for adoption at our next meeting. And, so then, that's Jazzcom's report. Lot Clean Water Alliance won't meet until next Wednesday, December 11th, and the Olympic Region Clean Air Agency, or ORCA, does not meet in December, and that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Cox.
Alrighty. The Regional Housing Council will have a half-day retreat on December 19th. We'll be focusing on crafting an interlocal agreement that share, that reflects shared purpose and commitments for this new organization. Members of this group include Thurston County, the cities of Lacey, Olympia, and Tomwater. And this is really an exciting opportunity to create regional housing policies and work together to address issues including affordable housing and homelessness. The Human Health and Services Council's December meeting has been canceled, so we'll get back to them in January. The big news came out of intercity transit last night. We formally approved a five-year zero-fare pilot program. So this means that all bus and dial-a-lift paratransit services will be free starting January 1st. We will continue to charge for vanpool services. And as I've previously reported, the authority has been discovering, I mean, excuse me, studying alternative fares for well over a year, and we reached the conclusion that it would actually cost more to replace the aging fare box collection system with a modern system to collect fares than we would bring in in fares. And furthermore, we've investigated other communities that have gone to zero fares and have found that they've made impressive gains in ridership as well as more efficient use of the system. Mr. Mayor, somebody has his hand up back there? Do you want to take a question?
No, let's go through this, and we'll, we'll talk to him afterwards.
Okay. I'll catch you after the thing. So, let's see, getting back to that, we also approved the 2021 budget of $218,560,354, as well as the strategic plan for the years 2020 through 2025. The other big news coming out of that meeting is that intercity transit plans to expand service farther into northeast Lacey starting this coming March, and they're seeking input from Lacey residents on four different variations on how this new Route 65 would travel throughout. They're having community outreach events, the first occurred this afternoon. The next one is coming up this coming Wednesday, December 11th, here at City Hall, from 4:30 to 6:00 p.m. And then the third one will occur on January the 6th at the Community Action Council headquarters. That's at 3020 Willamette Drive, northeast Lacey, and that is also from 4:30 to 6:00 p.m. So, they really would like to hear from the people who live particularly in northeast Lacey about how that new service will best serve them, and that will inform the final decisions, which will be made after a public hearing with intercity transit on January 15th. So, big news out of there last night, we had noisemakers. We had noise makers commemorating that historic event. Thurston Regional Planning Council meets tomorrow morning at 8:30, and the Thurston Thrives Coordinating Council will have its year-end event at 4:00 p.m. December 16th at the Water Street Cafe. That's my report.
Thank you. Next up is Councilmember Greenstein.
I have just one report tonight, and that's on TCOM 911, which met yesterday. A couple of things of importance in that meeting. First, the state has completed their biannual audit, and there were no findings, which is a good thing. But because the budget will now exceed $10 million with the new 110 sales tax, the audit will now be an annual audit rather than a biannual audit. Bigger issue was, we approved last night the, moving forward with the contract with Motorola on the radio replacement project. You may recall that in the last report I gave, we had talked about waiting to do that until after we hired a project manager, because the project managers, in talking with them, believed that they could save us quite a bit of money on that contract. Well, Motorola came back to us and wanting to make a deal before the end of the year, lowered the contract offer by $3.4 million.
Wow.
So we voted last night unanimously to approve that contract because we did not believe that the property, the project manager could save us nearly that much. In addition, they agreed to financing at 2.97% with no prepayment penalties. And due to the, the new revenue source, we should be in a position to pay this off early and actually save the taxpayers considerable amount of money in, in the interest that they would have paid on that long-term loan. So pretty exciting news. I always like it when we can save that kind of money. We have moved forward, though, with the bidding process for project managers, and those bids are now being looked at, so that'll be finalized shortly. And then last but not least, all contract negotiations with all of the bargaining units are complete, and we have three-year contracts in place with all of the bargaining unit. So pretty successful meeting and really good position for TCOM, and things look really promising going forward for our 911 system. That is my report.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Hearn.
So we approved the lodging tax advisory committee budget with, with our budget, so thank you for that. The Thurston County Coalition Against Trafficking is gearing up for one of the main events of the year, and that's the community conversations. It's a very well-attended endeavor where key, where the public, as well as key contacts from the community gather for a community conversation about, about fighting human trafficking. This year is extra special because it's going to be hosted on January 30th at the Lacy Community Center. Historically, it's been in Tomwater ESD 13, but this year, we're hosting it here in Lacy. So I will be promoting that strongly. And also, our council member-elect Malcolm Miller is also on the TCAT committee, and I'm sure he'll be carrying the flag to, to promote that in Lacy so that it's fully attended, and we're really pleased about that. That is also the kickoff for the 5K Race Against Trafficking, which is also traditionally a big success to bring awareness to and raise funds to fight against the scourge of human trafficking. That's my report.
Councilmember Stedman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Community Action Council had no meeting, but we're currently in an audit right now. I was elected treasurer this year, so I'll be reporting on that when we have our next meeting. The next thing was Lacy South Sound Chamber. Now, this, the forum had the North Thurston Public Schools, and without getting into the upcoming special election and stuff on the bond levy thing, I just wanted to say that they are looking for people to give statements for and against that, for the ballot, and that many people don't know when it comes to bonds and levies, that the, the bonds, the B stands, is basically for building. So if you're going to rehab a, a school, and the L is for learning, so stuff like teachers and other stuff like that. So the general public, for the most part, doesn't have a, doesn't realize the difference between bonds and levies. So I tried to take an extra minute here and let them know that that's the easy way to remember it. Other than that, the Solid Waste Advisory Committee also didn't meet, but I said I was going to revisit the comment about going out to bid in, with the contract that we had We had a meeting scheduled for this coming Monday, but it was canceled for our RFP subcommittee. And I'm not sure exactly why, but I'm hoping that the county considers extending the five-year option that I've repeatedly briefed the council on. When you have a really good economy, things are going to cost more. I've gone over it 100 times, and so it's, it's best to probably status quo to save money. I think if we, they went out to contract for this RFP, it could potentially cost a lot more. So that's all I have to report on that.
Great. Well, we've reached the end of our agenda. I was going to, actually, I wanted to report back out in the mayor's report that we, our youth council is up and going, and they've had a couple meetings. And the deputy mayor and councilmember Greenstein, myself, attended the last meeting where I chaired at the beginning because they went to elect their youth council mayor and deputy mayor, and the mayor was elected, her name is Willa Isel, and she did a great job of running the meeting after she, after she took over. And Zen Yu Yu was elected as the deputy mayor. And so it's been a, after, after they did elections, they started talking about projects that the youth council wants to work on, and so there was a lot of discussion that happened about, about what kind of projects they're looking to do. They want to do a, you know, a kind of a, a movie night, movie in the park night, with a kind of an international flair. There were some talks about working with our diversity cooks and having them sort of bring together our diverse, diversity within the city and doing a celebration. They also were looking at doing a couple of other events and having a barbecue, a big youth barbecue in the summertime and bringing the youth together. There's, and so that was all interesting. They also were talking about starting to use technology so the youth in our community can start communicating better. And I showed my age because I was like, oh, yeah, Facebook would be a great tool. And like, yeah, we don't use Facebook. So I was like, oh, well, don't listen to me, I'm the old guy in the room now, so. But it was, it was really great to see the youth council, you know, working together, and they gave reports out on what's going on in each of their high schools. And so I'm really looking forward to continuing to work with them. After the first of the year, each of the council members will get an assignment for mentorship, and so we'll each be assigned a youth council member. And so we'll take some turns going to their youth council and reporting out what's going on at the city, and then we'll also be able to set some times where we can meet one-on-one and, and have some mentoring opportunities. And so I thought it was really impressive, the young group of, you know, kids working together and understanding local government and what it's going to take to come up with the budgets and everything else. So it was really kind of exciting, I see them. Please.
Yeah, I would, I would just add that I was incredibly impressed with that group of kids. If they're the future, we're in a really good place.
Absolutely.
They were, it was an amazingly good meeting.
Yeah.
I have to agree. I attended the very first one with Deputy Mayor Cynthia Pratt, and they are some sharp cookies, man. Those kids are bright. I also want to comment that during our NLC conference in Texas, I talked to the mayor of Tacoma, which they have a youth council of a lot. I mean, I want to say it's like 60 kids or 30 kids at least. And I suggested possibly a joint work session like we do with the county or, or the school district or whatever, that they possibly do the same thing with Tacoma. They could get fresh ideas, they can bounce ideas off each other, it could be beneficial for both councils.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of opportunities. You know, this is our first year of having a youth council, and so there are going to be lots coming at these kids right now, but when they get sort of, you know, their feet underneath them, and there's a, there's also going to be times where the, they're going to get some updates from our Parks Board, they're going to get update from our, our history, our historical commission, and so there's, there's a quite a bit of work ahead of these kids, but I think they're up to the task, and I'm looking forward to it. And so that's the end of my agenda. Everyone have a great night, and as always, you keep it classy, Lacy, and I'll call this meeting adjourned.[1786.33][1786.33]